All right, ready when you are.
Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. I welcome you to the December meeting of the Brighton Town Board of Appeals. So tonight, at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And we could begin by Mr. Di Stefano calling the roll.
Mr. Primo.
Here.
Ms. Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Mites.
Here.
Ms. McKay, Drury.
Here.
And Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
But the record show all members are present.
Okay, just briefly, I'd just like to let everyone who's on the call know how we generally handle these meetings. If you've not participated before, we have six applications. There were two correct, Rick, that have been withdrawn.
Postponed. Postponed and not withdrawn.
Sorry. Okay, so we have six. So what we'll do is when you hear the case called, then you could identify yourself and we will allow you to give us a presentation of why you feel we should approve your request. The board members will ask any questions they would like to ask. And when we finish that, then we will open the public hearing to anybody else on the Zoom call that might have an interest to speak regarding your application. If they do, then we will allow them to do so. When that finishes, we will then close the public hearing, move on to the next application. When we finish all six, then we would begin the deliberations. You're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations if you wish. And if you do not, then you will be able to call Mr. Di Stefano in the building department office tomorrow and find out what the result of your application was. Okay, so Rick, was the meeting properly advertised?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, advertising the daily record of November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we also do have minutes from the October meeting. And let me open it up to comments about those minutes. Judy?
Yeah, yes, on page forty, line sixteen, the second to last word should be even. On page. Oh, gosh, here, hold on. Page fifty, line five, delete the word "the." On line eight, the word should be "mic." On line eighteen, the first word should be "seen," S-E-E-N. On page sixty-two, the first word in line eight should be "off." On page sixty-four, line eight, delete the second "as." On line fifteen, it should be three thousand one hundred. On page sixty-five. The word in line twenty-one, I believe, should be summarized. I don't think it should be memorialized. Is that a fair assumption? To briefly just memorialize our points, don't you think to summarize is the word they want?
On line twenty-one? Yeah.
Okay, okay, so it's summarize. On line two, on page sixty-seven. It should be as the associate planner and delete building inspector. And the same applies. I think it was somewhere else. No, I don't see it. Okay, on page.
Judy, what case are you referring to?
On that one, I think it's the Whole Foods.
Yeah, building inspector is the correct language.
Even though Ramsey is speaking.
Ramsey is the building inspector also.
Oh, sorry. Oh, okay.
Okay.
Because he is a, he does introduce himself as associate planner.
But for the, for the record and for those appeals, he is the building inspector.
Thank you. Okay, straight there, Ben. Page sixty-nine, line eighteen. It should be primo, P-R-E-M-O, and not problem. On page eighty-eight.
Thank you for that, Judy, by the way.
Yes, you're not a problem, not yet. Eighty-eight, line twenty-one. The first words should be "that does." Okay, not backup. And one more. Page ninety-nine. Line three, the numbers should be three thousand three hundred thirty. And that is all that I have.
Okay, does anyone have anything else? Okay, so can we have a motion for the minutes, please?
Who there approve the minutes with corrections?
Okay.
Second.
Second, second by Andrea.
Motion is to approve the October minutes with corrections. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. McKay, Drury?
Yeah.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Motion to approve with corrections carries.
Okay, so when you're ready, Rick, then we can read the first application.
Application eleven-eight, A-O-two-twenty-one, application of Catherine Solano, owner of property located at Fort Cardiff Park for area variance inspection two oh-three dash two point one B, two oh-three dash nine eight four and two oh-seven dash six eight two. Allow for a shed to be located in a side yard and less than five feet from a lot line. Move the rear yard no closer than five feet to a lot line as required by code. Also, grab an application and plans on file.
Okay. Who do we have speaking for this application?
I'll be speaking. My name is Catherine Solano.
Okay, Catherine, then please proceed.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone this evening for taking some time to review my application for variance. And I thank you in advance for taking in consideration my request. I am requesting a variance to locate a garden shed that is very small. It is three by six feet on the side of my garage. I understand that the town code asks for garages to be placed in the, excuse me, sheds to be placed in the rear yards only. And I understand that they also have to be five feet from property lines, both rear and side. We are requesting that we put the shed on the side of the garage for a variety of reasons. Number one would be ease of use for us so that we may be able to access the tools that we need directly from the front of the garage and also from the driveway. We also are very respectful of the fact that there is a hedge line separating twelve Cardiff Park from our property. That hedge usually is between four and six feet. Therefore, it's a very natural protective barrier so that the neighbors from twelve Cardiff cannot see the full structure. We also have landscaping that has been arranged all around the side of the house. On the on the backside, we have some landscaping. Also, on the other side of the property, we have landscaping, which would really inhibit the opportunity to be able to put a shed in the lean-to format up against the property itself. And then also, the other reason that we have is that for wanting to place it on the side is that currently, as you can see in the property map, we do have a brick patio. However, we intend to expand that and wrap that around the entire rear of the property. And we don't want to have to rearrange that just to accommodate the shed. When we walked around our neighborhood, and our neighborhood is very small, or a pocket neighborhood, if people aren't familiar with it, our houses are typically very small. Some people have garages, some people do not. And there are five other properties in our pocket neighborhood that have a very similarly sized shed in the exact same location to the side in their side yards. Some of those people do have garages, some people do not. But that's something that we really are asking the board to consider when reviewing our case.
Okay, very good. So, questions by the board members for Ms. Solano?
This is member Wright, just to confirm, did you put in your application that the plan is to paint the structure the same color as the home and use a similar shingle as your roof? So I just want to confirm that and that the intent is that this will almost look like it's part of the, the home structure as opposed to a separate structure?
Exactly, yep. And a lot of the neighbors that we have in this neighborhood have structures that look completely different. Most people are familiar with seeing like a plastic type unit for people to hang rakes and shovels in. Our unit blends completely in with the house and the architectural style of the house and the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay.
Schwartz, it is up already, correct?
Yes.
That is up.
Yes.
It's very visible from the street. I mean, you don't miss it. Is there any concern about the visibility from the street?
So we are located at the dead end of Cardiff Park. And being that most of the people that live on Kent Park, they use the alleyway, which they mostly access from the other side. So truly, the only people that come down in front of my house is really just me and maybe one or two other neighbors.
Have you received any comments from your neighbors since the sheds was put up?
Yes, I did. And that member is part of the Zoom meeting tonight, which I'm sure he would like to speak.
Okay, very good.
And I'll just say it also, members, you did receive communications last month for this application. I hope you remember those or have them with you so that you can refer to them.
Okay.
And we also did meet in person with the building inspector and also with Mr. Boehner to fully discuss the location of the shed, you know, the, the aesthetics of it, the architectural aspect of it, the environmental impact of it. And, and we discussed a variety of options, and then he recommended that we pursue this route.
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna just touch base with that. I think that this was an option to pursue. I don't think we recommended this option. Basically, the recommendation would have been to build it per code. If you want to keep it here, then certainly you have the right to apply for variance, so.
Yes, yes, that is accurate.
Okay, yep, that's good. Okay, is there any other questions for Ms. Solano?
Yep, this is member Schmidt.
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much for coming in. I was, can you explain to me again why the shed could not be built on the other side of the house facing what looked like woods?
Yep, so as of right now, that area is fully landscaped, and it was that way when I purchased the home. And because the structure is a lean-to design, it, it really should be leaning up against, you know, a, a vertical structure. So landscaping would have to be removed or ripped out and in order for it to, to be there.
And the back of the house, the reason why I can't go there?
I know you said that you were gonna put a patio, but couldn't the lean-to be put against the house and the patio built around it?
Um, well, the plan right now, if you look at the map, you can see there's a brick patio that's kind of in like a D shape. And our intent is to extend that to make it an L shape all the way around the back of the property.
And the, but the lean-to can't go, the patio couldn't go around the lean-to?
Well, the patio would be attached to the house with a roof, a pergola-style roof that would go into the house itself.
Isn't the existing shed where it is, I, I'm not sure where the path you're proposing putting would be, but wouldn't that, would that be in the way, with where it currently is? Would that be in the way? Is it that side of the house that you plan to put the path around?
Um, I guess I'm not quite understanding the question. Could you recede?
Yeah, maybe. I mean, we're looking at the map, so maybe if you can describe where you want to put the path.
The patio?
Yeah, you said that, you said that you want to continue the path around the house, so I'm just trying to understand.
The patio around that, it's not a path, but.
Yeah, yeah, right. Okay, or if you can, if you can explain where that.
Yeah, so, so if you look at the map right now, where the brick patio is, it's in D-shaped. And then if you were to form basically an L over towards the, the, the side of my, my lot to wrap around the, the side of the house, other direction from the cursor, the correct right there.
Okay.
So it, it in essence would be, be, it would wrap that back area, but also be sort of behind the shed, correct?
Um, I, I'm, I guess I don't, I don't really quite understand. The intent is to have an elevated stone patio in L shape with attached roof.
Okay, but it would stop at the corner of the house? Sort of at that, the corner right behind the shed in essence is.
Yes, and then the next side of the house has bowed out picture windows and landscaping, and then the same with the front corner.
Okay.
So, yeah, just to put it into context, looking at the map, what I'm trying, trying to understand is why it couldn't, why the shed couldn't go basically where it says, I think it's OH letters right next to brick patio. If you're gonna do the patio expansion over on the other side of the D, then would there be a problem with putting it where it says OH?
Yeah, that, that would be potentially a place to put it. However, we would have to rip up all of the landscaping that, that is there now currently. It could most definitely go, if you look at the map, there is a fence that, it's like a gate that goes on the side. You know, there is, is space right there. I, you know, to be honest, I don't quite know if that is even considered side yard still or backyard. I don't know how that's necessarily determined. But basically, where the X is now, if it were just shifted down to the other side of that fence, that gate, I, I mean, there's definitely space for that. I just don't know if the town still considers that backyard or side yard.
Once you're behind the back corner of the house, that starts the rear yard. So you'd have to be behind the back corner. If you move down that wall.
I also want to clarify too, because I, I saw the existing structure. Are you proposing a, a new renovated version of that, or are you just seeking approval for what's already there? You're not updating it?
No, no, there's, there's no additional updates to the structure that's there.
But let me just make a comment here in regards to what might need to be upgraded. One of the reasons we require a five-foot setback is because at five feet or greater, you do not have to provide fire separation for a structure. Once you're closer than five feet, per New York State Building Code, you have to rate that structure. So there might be some form of fire protection that would be required in order for that shed to be there, per New York State Building Code. Because a building permit would also need to be obtained here, which hasn't been at this point.
So we are five feet from the side property line.
I think you're less than five feet from the side property line.
The, the survey looks like you're seven and a half feet with the current structure and then adding a three, making three foot less would be four point eight feet from the property line.
Okay, I, I would have to go out and obviously measure again, I guess. You know, that's been, again, a point of, of discussion around property line with that specific.
Well, the, the survey, the survey is showing us that your, the house corner is seven point eight feet off the side property line. So you subtract the three-foot shed, and obviously you're gonna be closer than five feet to that lot line. I mean, we go by what the survey says, and it's showing a seven point eight feet. Jeff, could you just put your cursor up on the seven point eight? Going up? Jeff, yeah, right there. It's seven point eight. That's the distance from the corner of the house to the property line.
And I, again, I can say, if, if people have experienced, you know, my neighborhood and seen it, everything is very, very tight together. And the structure that we have here is, is not out of the norm of what else is happening in the neighborhood. So again, that had something to do with when we decided to, to build it. You know, to be full disclosure, we thought that we could put it where we put it. We have no interest in, in willingly breaking town code. We just weren't aware. However, when you look at the rest of the neighborhood, you can see that this is, you know, a pretty serious trend that a lot of people's yards are designed the same way and have structure in the same place.
Good.
I have a question. You were saying that where the OH is on the back of the house is landscaped, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, and I, and I want to just go back again to the extension of your patio. You said that there will be sort of like a pergola, it will be sort of a pergola effect. There will be some roofing coming from the house.
Absolutely.
Cover it. So my question is, won't your, the extension of your patio go over that landscaping that's there now? Or are you going around it or what?
No, it would not impact the area at all. So where the OH is now, there is landscaping. And then right where that number twenty-five is, is the door to the garage. And so basically, if you go to the farthest point out of the rounded brick patio and just draw a straight line going north and then heading west to the other side of the corner of the property, that's our, that's our intent.
That way, okay.
And nothing is landscaped on the back side right now.
Okay, so are there any other questions here, please?
Can we also talk about the corner? I'd like to understand, on the opposite side of where it is currently, there's a corner, it looks like you can see like the interior corner there. It's maybe labeled eleven point zero and then eight point one. Are you seeing what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell us if that would be a, a location where it could be placed and if you consider that?
Well, um, I would think that that was out of town code because it's in the front yard.
Correct. I was just gonna answer that for you. That would be considered front.
And it would be too close to the lot line, too. Okay.
My mistake.
Yeah, I, I, again, I don't, I'm not the expert in town code. I don't know with the right-of-way on the side, you know. I, I understand this lot is very unique with the right-of-way lines. I don't know if I can put a structure in a right-of-way or if that's considered blocking it. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, so either, either way, the, on the right side of the structure isn't gonna work because of the the front yard, so, okay. But anyway, and is there any other questions? I think, you know, Rick, just wanted you, Ms. Solano, to understand that, you know, yes, it appears that it's gonna be less than five feet. So then you do open up the issues related to the structure itself when you file a building permit. So that's really informational for you.
Okay.
Okay, because it appears from our review of the structure here and the setback line and the survey that it will be a, a little bit short, so.
Okay.
All right, good.
We have a follow-up question just on that. If.
Yes.
If I wasn't able to kind of see where our property lines are, but does it appear that these other structures inside lots in this neighborhood are, are closer than five feet from property lines? Or is it just that they are in the side lot?
They absolutely are. Wait, there's no possible way for them to put a structure on the side of their property without encroaching on the five-foot code.
All right.
But we don't have any pictures of those others, correct?
I, I do have pictures of them, and when I met with Mr. Boehner and I forget his name, but the building inspector as well, they, they did not want to see the pictures. I didn't know if I should be submitting them to this as well. I'm happy to send a follow-up email with pictures of those.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions? Okay, is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding this application?
Yes, Jeff, could you let in Jeff Gardat, please?
Ah, yes, this is Nancy Gardat. My husband and I are here together. Um, thank you for taking this time. My husband Jeff and I asked that the board not grant, grant this variance for the following reasons.
Excuse me, Ms. Gardat, excuse me, can you tell us what your address is, please?
Our address is twelve Cardiff Park. We are right next door to Fort Cardiff Park.
Okay, go ahead and proceed, please.
Thank you. I will try to address each point Mrs. Solano made in her application. First, Mrs. Solano has concern regarding the shed being placed on the west side of her property that would disrupt the natural aesthetic view of her woods. Please note that this shed is directly opposite our living room bay window. It intrudes on what little view we have. Yes, the hedges are tall, but they lose their leaves over the winter. And the Solanos actually asked that we keep them tall. And please note that the hedges were here when we moved in thirty-one years ago. The height of the hedges does make it more difficult for us to trim. We have demon, we have demonstrated that we can trim them from our side. And the Solanos asked and offered to trim from their side, and we agreed, which they have failed to do. Mrs. Solano stated that it would be difficult to place the shed on the west side of her property due to the town right-of-way. I'm not sure if this town right-of-way is truly an issue. I believe the right-of-way was once grant, once granted access to a back alley on Cardiff Park that hasn't existed for over, I think, fifty years. She states also that it would be impossible to locate it anywhere else due to her future plans for a patio and her existing garden. The Solanos have over an acre of land. In comparison, we have point one four acres. Mrs. Solano stated yards are small in our neighborhood, most have sheds and no working garages. Sheds are mostly placed in backyards or side yards, not on the front of any house, not on the side front of any house, as she wishes to do with this one. If you walk through our neighborhood, you would find four to five sheds, and only one is in a side yard that is between the front edge of the house and the back edge of the house. The rest of them are beyond the back edge of the house. She also has a working garage. Mrs. Solano states that any placement of the shed on the east side of her backyard, which is our side, would cause us difficulty trimming our hedges and impede the view from our back deck. She has applied for a permit to put up a six-and-a-half-foot fence on the east side of her backyard. So any concern for our ability to trim our hedges or impede the view from our deck is a moot point. Even without the fence, our landscaping effectively blocks any view of her yard. I thank you for taking the time to, to listen to our concerns tonight and for your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding this application?
I would like to, to reply if, if I may.
We do not allow reply back and forth between the applicant and people speaking, Ms. Solano.
Can I ask the board permission to follow up with the pictures via email?
You could certainly submit them shortly.
And to whom do I direct those?
I would say to Mr. Di Stefano.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate everyone's time tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if there are no one else to, or excuse me.
Yeah, to clarify, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
There is an active sanitary sewer line on that side of the house.
Steve, just can you introduce yourself to the board, please?
Yeah, Steve Zimmer, I'm Deputy Commissioner of Public Works for the town of Brighton.
Okay. Go ahead, Steve.
There is an active sanitary sewer line that runs through that right-of-way on the side of your house there.
Okay, so you maintain the right-of-way, okay.
Yeah, the right-of-way is used.
Okay, thank you for that information. We appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Dennis, it's Ken Gordon.
Yes, Ken.
Yeah, thanks. So, um, one problem I see in allowing a submission after today is that if the board decides to close the public hearing and make a decision tonight on this matter, then those pictures that Ms. Solano is going to be submitting will be submitted after the board makes its decision. So later on, when we get to that, I just wanted to make this clarification before we lost Ms. Solano in case she doesn't stay on.
Okay.
If the board decides to close the public hearing and make a decision tonight, those pictures will not be part of the public record. It's only if the board decides to leave the public hearing open with that. board decides to leave the public hearing open would that be allowed.
Okay, appreciate that.
Dennis has said primo. Ken, is that a decision we need to make now?
No, no, we typically, um, decide whether the public hearing is gonna be closed or not later when, uh, when you take it up to debate each item.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so is there anyone else to speak regarding this application? Okay, very good. And we'll, uh, deal with the public hearing at this point, so. Okay.
Are you ready for the next one?
Yes, yes, yes.
Application twelve A oh one twenty-one, application of Nancy Zimmer, owner of property located at seventy-one Gulfside Parkway for area variance in section two oh three dash two point one B six to one, allow a standby emergency generator to be located in the side yard and move the rear yard behind the house as required by code. And two, allow said generator to be eight plus or minus feet from a lot line and move the minimum ten feet required by code. All described in application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for twelve A oh one?
This is Steve Zimmer. I'm the, um, owner's representative. Uh, it's my mother's house. And I am, just for full disclosure, a town of Brighton employee and the Deputy Commissioner of Public Works.
And your address, Steve?
Uh, I'm at one hundred Van Boris Road in Pittsburgh.
Okay, just hang on for one second. Jeff, can you get the, can you get the site plan up for seventy-one Gulfside, please? Thank you.
No, that's not it.
That's Brookline, seventy-one Gulfside.
I'm figuring.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
I believe okay, I see where, where I know. So requesting the, the variance because of, um, there's no, really no rear yard to, um, put the generator in. Um, the koi pond in the back and some very old antique, um, azalea bushes and rhododendrons um, in the back where that electric panel arrow is, right in that area, is all full of, uh, very mature, original plantings. Um, those big bushes that are absolutely gorgeous in the springtime. And then, so we moved it up to the side, um, to keep it away from the neighbor's patio as well. So this is opposite, uh, like the neighbor's got a huge, ugly, uh, brick chimney. And so we put it opposite there just to shield it from, uh, everybody's view. There is quite a bit of landscaping across the front that's shielding that area now, and that's gonna stay. So you should not be able to see that from the road, from where I'll be. And I believe the contractor is on the Zoom meeting as well.
Okay. Uh, right, so, board members, are there any questions for Mr. Zimmer?
Um, I'd like to just clarify, uh, the bushes that you're talking about that you wanna make sure you can keep. Um, is that, I see where you've labeled electric panel. Um, do, what about that entire, um, west-facing wall that goes from there and it's labeled twelve feet?
Uh, that's a great, a glass in, uh, like sunroom patio area, and that's where the bushes, um, like from the tip of the arrow all the, the property line is like twelve foot high and twelve foot round azalea bushes. Uh, and that whole, that whole area.
Okay.
Uh, maybe we should hear from the contractor to just get, um, some more detail um, in terms of technical aspects of why the generator needs to be located there.
If he would like to do so, that would be wonderful. Let's have a look.
What's his name, Steve?
Isaac or.
We both.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, I'm Ken. I'm the contractor representative today. And to Steve's point, if we, um, meet.
Ken, give us your address, please, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-two Saddlebrook in Pittsburgh, New York. My apologies.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Dennis. Um, to Steve's point, to, to meet the current fire code of five feet from any windows and openings, uh, that would put us to his point right into where the azalea bushes are. Um, and conversely, in the very rear, it would put us basically in the middle of the koi pond. Obviously, we don't wanna put, place a generator there. Um, also on the side, which is pretty nice, is it's covered from the, the, obviously, there's a very, uh, deep setback from the home as it is. And the front of the house is covered by existing vegetation, which does keep, uh, green in the winter as well. So there're basically little to no view from, uh, the front of the street. And on, on the side lot, it's covered as well um, with, uh, some, some dense vegetation. So, uh, it'd be hard pressed for the neighbors to even see it. Um, in addition to that, um, we would be, you know, five feet off a structure, uh, from, or windows or openings on that side of the home. Um, the unit itself is two foot by four foot long, um, and it only runs once a week for five minutes on a test unless obviously there's a power outage. And that, that time it puts out, uh, about sixty-three decibels, uh, which is a little less than a lawnmower. So just for reference.
Okay. Any questions for Ken? Or back to Mr. Zimmer, any questions by the board?
Uh, just say if I could make a note, um, from our front porch, we can see generators in the side yard of number eighty-eight and ninety-six across the street. And as well as, um, fifty-three Gulfside has one in their side yard. Um, and eighty-five right next door, right across from our sidewalk is their generator. Right about where it says, um, eight point nine feet to the property line. This is right behind the house in that, in the little corner.
Steve, have you discussed the, um, time of testing with your mom?
I did not, no.
Okay, but you would be amenable to something in either mid-morning or early afternoon? That would be okay?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Okay, good. Okay, any other questions? All right, uh, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none on the public hearing, please.
Application twelve, application twelve A oh two twenty-one, application Cornell Construction Design Agent and Bruce and Mary Vickers, owners of property located at sixty-five Brook Pond Drive for an area variance in section two oh five dash two to allow covered porch to extend five feet into the forty-foot front setback required by code. All described in application and plans on file.
Okay, so who do we have speaking for this application, twelve A oh two?
Robert Cornell, Cornell Construction Design.
Okay, Bob, can you just give us your address, please, and then proceed?
Uh, thirty-nine Shalimar Drive, Rochester, one four six one eight. Um, we've done, uh, projects for the Vickers. In fact, uh, last, two years ago, we put an addition on the back of their house. They have a beautiful backyard. It backs up to Brighton High School. Um, it's very nice, but one of the things that we're finding as a contractor, and in fact, uh, we've now, this will be the fourth, uh, front porch that we've been in front of, uh, Brighton Board to put in Brighton. We're finding that people in a neighborhood like to be in front of their house. They like to be close to their neighbors. People walk their dogs. They talk. They sit out. They have coffee in the morning. Um, it builds friendships in a neighborhood. It also is very desirable from a safety standpoint for, because more people that are in the front of their house, the safer a neighborhood becomes. Uh, then this particular house, the, uh, the front of the house is gonna be enhanced greatly by putting a porch on. It's a very plain front. So from a curb appeal standpoint, this will also enhance the curb appeal of the house. Uh, we did not get in front of Architecture Review last week. We were out of town. We are gonna be on Architecture Review Board for the end of the month. Um, so I can't comment on that, but we have submitted drawings along with, uh, with this application.
Okay. Very good. All right, uh, questions by the board?
This is member Schmidt. Um, I just wanted to verify a few things. I just wanted, first, the plan is not to enclose the porch. It's open. Is that correct?
Correct.
And right now, it looks as if there's no type of covering from the elements at all. Is is that correct? It's just a flat door?
Uh, no, there's a roof. Oh, you mean for the existing house?
For the existing house. There's no protection at all.
No, none whatsoever.
Okay.
No, you come, there is a, there is a stoop there now, which is just about the same distance out as this porch will be. And you're absolutely right. If you go to the front door in that house and, and it's raining or snowing out, you're standing in the weather.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions, please? Anything else?
Uh, I have a question, this member.
Go ahead.
Um, was it considered whether the, um, uh, porch should, would go all the way to the side of the house? And is it something done frequently to just do the partial like that?
Well, it was done from a design standpoint and consultation with the owners. Uh, in fact, uh, we had a, I wanted to make the steps come off the left-hand end of it, and they don't want that. They want this to be more of a traditional front entrance porch, like you'd see in the city of Rochester. Uh, in fact, uh, interestingly, we've built porches in the city of Rochester. They don't require any variance application whatsoever for a front open porch in the city of Rochester because their data shows that it actually increases safety in the neighborhood. And as the same reasons I've said before, it enhances friendships in the neighborhood. People sit on their porch, uh, passersby stop and talk to them. So it's very interesting that, um, I learned that when I did a porch in the Corn Hill area, that you don't need a variance for a front porch as long as it's open.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the applicants? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I just, I was gonna say I don't see anybody.
Oh, all right, good. Okay, then at this point, then the public hearing's closed. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Okay.
Um, just for anybody in the audience who's here for twelve A oh three twenty-one or twelve A oh four twenty-one, they have both been postponed to the December, to the January meeting. So we'll go on to twelve A oh five twenty-one, application of James Brassley, architect, and Susan and David Rothenberg, owners of property located at seventy-six Fernborough Road for an area variance in section two oh five dash two to allow a pre-season room and deck addition to extend five feet into the forty-foot rear setback required by code. All described in application and plans on file.
Okay, I see Jim there. Jim, just give us your address and then you can proceed.
Hi, I'm Jim Brassley, architect. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I think I'm also joined by the homeowner, Susan Rothenberg. Is she turned on?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, hi, welcome everyone. It's, uh, I'm Jim Brassley, architect. My office is at ten Cambridge Court in Fairport. I'm joined by the homeowner for seventy-six Fernborough Road, Susan Rothenberg. Susan and her husband David have lived in a different neighborhood in Brighton for many years, and they recently bought this house on Fernborough Road. This is their, uh, agent place home where they're gonna stay, and, uh, they liked it because it was one-story. It met all of their needs. It's close to their son's house, which is only a few blocks away. They're doing some major interior renovations to get ready to move in, and they're gonna put a small laundry room and mudroom addition behind the garage. Um, all of that fits within the current zoning code, so that's not what I'm here to talk about tonight. One thing the house doesn't have is any access to the backyard. So what they'd like to do is put on a three-season room on the rear of the porch and a deck so they can enjoy the warm weather, um, and enjoy their backyard. There's currently a forty-foot setback in this neighborhood. Um, their house is currently about forty-nine feet setback from the rear lot line. So with the addition being about fifteen feet by seventeen feet for the porch and about fifteen feet by twenty-two feet for the deck, um, they're gonna need to extend about five feet into the forty-foot setback, resulting in about a thirty-five-foot setback. I believe this meets all of the requirements for a zoning variance. This won't result in a change of the neighborhood. Um, it'll be completely invisible from the street. It's in the center of the rear of the house. There is many other houses on this street and the street behind them, Maybrook, that have similar additions. I'm sure you know this street has houses that are fifty or sixty years old, and lots of people have put additions on over the years. Um, there's no other place to put the addition. The purpose of the room is a three-season room and a deck. Those go in the back of the house. There's not enough room on the side, and this is the logical place to put it right behind their living room. So they can open that up, um, to the rest of the house when the addition is built. This variance is also relatively small. It's only five feet of the forty-foot full setback. Um, if they were to meet the code, they would only have about eight or nine feet deep for their three-season room, and that's really not deep enough to put any furniture or have any use to it. So they do need the variance to go into that. And if this variance is granted, they still meet all the other zoning requirements for the property. In terms of setbacks, they still are within the lot coverage. They're at only twenty-four percent with the additions. Um, you're allowed to have twenty-five percent. They're well under the maximum livable area for the house, so it will still fit in the neighborhood. Um, it's a small addition, small deck. There won't be any environmental impact. I suppose that their request is self-created, but I also know that that doesn't necessarily have to be considered, um, as a factor in your decision. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, this is, um, member Primo. Um, as I remember looking at the property, though, um, a lot of the side setbacks are, um, pre-existing legal non-conforming, right?
That's correct. There's about, uh, eight or nine feet on each side, and I believe they would have to have about twelve feet, so they don't meet side setback requirements already. So they are pre-existing non-conforming.
And the lot size is a pre-existing non-conforming also.
That is also correct.
Um, so there'd be no other location to put this. I mean, you don't have enough space in the side yard, and if you went in the front yard, you're still gonna need a variance from there, I believe.
Yes, you would, and I would guess that most people don't want a three-season room or a big deck for entertaining in their front yard.
Right. Um, looking at the property, um, along the back property line, it looks like there's a solid row of, um, evergreen, an evergreen hedge row.
There's actually two rows of evergreen hedgerows. There's one on this property and there's one on the property behind them on Maybrook. So their hedge row is a little bit, uh, within their property line, but you are correct, yes.
And those hedge rows will remain?
Oh, yes. Um, yes, that's one of the reasons why Mrs. Rothenberg liked that house, well, for the privacy.
Right, and it looked like they were doing some work when I was there, moving some bricks and stuff. Looks like they're kind of doing some nice work along there. Um, no, that's all the, I, I would note, as you said, when you stand kind of in that back area and look on either side, you see going down other people's backyards, similar areas that look like three-season porches or whatever, extending back. So this would be kind of consistent with, with what you can see in the area. Would you agree with that, Jim?
It's definitely consistent with other houses in the neighborhood. Um, the house, two doors to the east at number ninety-six has an addition that encroaches into the setback. Um, the houses, two and three houses to the west at number forty-six and fifty-six also have additions. And there's several on Maybrook behind them that also have similar additions, all within maybe two, three hundred feet of this house.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Brassley? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, then at this point, the public hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Application twelve A oh six twenty-one, application of Karini Engineering Design Agent, John and Carrie Karen Gallagher, owners of property located at twenty-five Northumberland Road for an area variance in section two oh five dash two to allow covered porch to extend ten plus or minus feet into the existing thirty-five-foot front setback or forty-foot front setback as required by code. All described in application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for twelve A oh six?
Uh, whoa. I'm guessing, is there anybody there?
is there anybody there? Am I muted still?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, I, I, I assumed our architect was gonna be here. This is John Gallagher. I apologize. Are we getting feedback?
Your, your computer's muted. Mine is not. Uh, they don't, they realize, they, they, they think that you and I are on the same, on my computer.
Okay.
Okay, so what, who do we have that's going to speak for twelve A O six?
Uh, Judge Gallagher and Karen, I, I do not think that your architect of Karini, right? I don't see them on the call, so I think you're going to have to present this on your own. Can you unmute yourselves, please?
Not muted on.
There you are. You're, you're good now. We can hear you now.
Okay. So, our intention here today is to uh, put a front porch on the house at twenty-five Northumberland. I'm sorry, I'm just putting my headphone, my earphones away, so I don't get feedback, because I, there we go. Uh, to allow us to put a front porch extending uh, left to right on the house. Proper, now there's a little side porch, as you can see from the uh, drawing, that's not going that far. It's not completely going across the front of the property line, the front of the house. What we're intending to do is just make a front porch that fits within the front stoop, if you will. Like, that's already existing. What we do is just cross it all, go across the front of the house. Uh, just the portion of the front of the house. It doesn't include the existing. Where are we? Okay, that eight by nine structure right there. Uh, our idea again is just to put a front porch. We think it falls within the existing footprint of the steps that are already there. As a matter of fact, I measured it the other night. Uh, the end of the steps, and I have no objection to including the steps in the porch structure, if you will, so that they don't extend out any farther into the uh, setback. And as far as that goes, I, I, the, one of the things that struck me as I was listening to, I believe it was Mr. O'Connell or Mr. Cornell, I forget who it was, trying to put a, put a front porch on, up on Brook Lawn. And one of the things I was talking to my wife about, the uh, many times actually, is most of most people right now, at least in this neighborhood, that without, don't have front porches, they hang out in their backyards. And to me, that's sort of an issue. My family's originally from Philadelphia. My mother has a front porch. My grandparents had a front porch, and exactly what that gentleman was indicating to me, or indicating to you beforehand, was that the neighborhood becomes more of a neighborhood when you can actually talk to the people that are in the neighborhood, and that's what the front porch does. When people walk their dogs, I say hello to people when they walk by all the time. We have a little stoop, if you will. But unfortunately, if there's inclement weather, uh, there's no way for me to sit on that porch while it's raining outside or snowing or sleeting or hailing or whatever the heck it may be doing. Uh, and I would like to sit outside during the months that we have here. We live in a upstate New York, so we have very little limited period of time where we can enjoy the outsides, and I would love to have a front porch in this house. And I apologize that I'm not an architect. Uh, and I don't know how to speak to an architectural board, uh, but I'm open to any questions you may have for me, and we can go from there.
Yeah, can I just uh, get in here for a second? Mr. Gallagher, I guess the, the, the problem that I'm seeing is that your application is reflecting a porch across the entire frontage of the house coming out ten feet from the front edge of the house towards the road. I don't think you, did you explain that when you, I, I thought you were explaining just to go around the steps, as you started your, your presentation.
Okay, when, when you, if you look at, I believe that the ten feet that uh, was on that drawing that I guess Karini submitted, is, it's deeper than the actual front of the steps. So the steps, the, the steps themselves, now I can't tell if the front stoop that I'm looking at right here in the drawing includes the steps. If it doesn't include the steps, then our steps actually go extend out to in that little right where that arrow was going, the steps would go to that line as it is.
Yes, according to your, according to the floor plan that was submitted with your application, that line is the edge of the step. So the steps are included in the entire box, but we're talking, you are still presenting here the entire red area to be the porch, correct?
Okay, thank you. But I, 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 I believe that might be a mismeasure, because I just did it the other day, because I was, I know that Ms. Schwartz had walked by, I believe it was on Sunday, and my wife was talking to her, and I, just for my own informational purposes, I went out and measured from the front of the house to the end of the steps. And that is almost exactly ten feet.
Right, and that's the, that's the variance that you're requesting, is ten feet into the existing setback. We don't include that entryway as part of your existing setback requirement. Because you are allowed some um, encroachment with what exists into the front setback. So the drawing is, is correct, and what I can tell from what your architect um, submitted to us. Right, Ju-, um, Rick, if I could just clarify, this is Ken Gordon. I, Judge, I, I think all that Mr. DiStefano was trying to clarify is that the application is in fact for a ten-foot porch that's gonna extend ten feet out and go across the entire face of your property, right? That's what you're doing.
Correct, correct. And what we're also, and, and, and it's reflecting with the rest of the neighborhood, uh, there are many homes on the, on Northumberland themselves. I believe it's nine.
Yeah, our next-door neighbors at eight, across the street, the, 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 the three neighbors as well across the street, all have front covered porches. One of them is enclosed and the
I don't know if you can hear my wife or not. But there are neighbors across, on the street that have uh, covered porches. One of them's, one, at least one of them's enclosed.
And just so our record is clear, um, Karen, could you just tell us your name?
Yes, absolutely. So, um, we went through
Karen Heber Gallagher.
Your name first, please.
Uh, Karen Heber Gallagher. Um, past couple weeks, I've went up the street and talked to neighbors that all have front porches, and we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven neighbors, um, closest to us, all have front porches. I had measured them. Um, they're all anywhere between eight to nine feet from the front of the house. Um, Mrs. Wright, who is next door to us, um, her front porch actually is, extends out and equal to where we, we would want ours, so would, would be in line. So if you're looking at the side of our home, you would be able to see her front porch and our front stoop, which we actually do sit on, but it's barely covered, but it rains, we go in, um, is equal distance from our front of the house uh, out. I guess that's the best way to put it. And what we're wanting to do is make our front porch the same um, width from others in our neighborhood. Depth, that is.
I, I think it might help us a little bit too, if, um, Jeff, if you can put up the floor plan. Just slide over, slide over where the new deck is going to be now, other direction, other direction. There you go, and just go there.
And, and we did get the uh, ten foot just honestly by looking at where the end of our steps was. Um, I don't think it necessarily has to be, you know, the, 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 the ten feet, the eight, the ten would be good, because we were thinking about being able to put, you know, a table out. Um, Mrs. Wright and Mrs. Fitzpatrick, I'll eat dinner out on the front porch. Um, and it would be awesome to be able to do that as well. We were just kind of trying to figure out, you know, instead of just having our front porch just in the center, we would like it on either side, and we would be covering it and residing the whole house as well at that, at that time.
This is member Wright. Uh, in the application packet, there are a number of surveys that were submitted for properties other than your property all along Northumberland Road. I just wanted to confirm, those are your neighbors that have similarly sized front porches with similar uh, setback variances or, or uh, similar encroachments into this setback, front setback.
I believe so.
Yeah, I believe so. I'm not, I don't, I don't see them. Um, we, we did, we did go over just the other homes on the street and how um, similar they were.
This is Judy, just a point of question. Have you been before the Architect's Review Board, or, or were you waiting for your approvals tonight?
We have not been before the Architectural Review.
Thank you.
This is all new, as, as Mr. Gordon indicated. I may be familiar with some of type proceedings like this, but it was my understanding that the money that I paid for our architect would have been here to uh, help us walk through this and actually use the magic words that I know that all boards and people that I'm with uh, need to make things. I don't know the magic word. I apologize.
You're doing just fine, Judge. But you'll have to take that issue up with your architect. We can't help you.
I will.
I'm glad Judy came over to take a look at it too the other day.
And um, if I could, uh, if I could ask a question. This is intended to be an open porch, not an enclosed porch.
Correct. My idea is uh, for, to have a half wall and then opening. Uh, no need for, I mean, I, I want to be able to talk to my neighbor that I don't want to see him, because I can see him out my front windows. Uh, but I would like to be able to talk to my neighbors as they walk by, or talk to Mrs. Wright as she's on her front porch, or Mrs. Kirkpatrick is, where, if she's walking their dogs and things of that nature. Uh, yes, there's no need to enclose it. I just want to have, put a roof on it, but a half wall on it. Uh, so if in my, I'm in my pajama pants, I don't necessarily see my pajama pants, but they see my Oxford shirt instead.
And, and Judge, this won't impact your holiday decorations, right? You'll still do
The intention is not to affect the decorations. Not at all. We may incorporate decorations in the, on the porch. And again, just one more thing to um, fill out the record a little bit more. Can you talk a little bit about um, the neighbor to your immediate left, uh, as you're in your house facing Northumberland, and neighbor immediately across the street from you. What are those properties?
Uh, they're both residential properties. Uh, Mrs. Mrs. Wright is to our immediate left uh, facing Northumberland. Uh, it's a, I, I forget what her address is, uh, but she has a covered front porch uh, that she sits out on, and then our, the first house on the other side of Nor- Northumberland also has a covered porch uh, that people sit out on and enjoy their time out there, and I would like to have something similar in front of our house.
And you're at the um, extreme end of Northumberland, right near Monroe Avenue with commercial properties uh, very close by. Is that correct as well?
Correct, yeah, correct. Again, facing Northumberland from my front door to my immediate right is now the Monroe Med Spa. Uh, used to be an all-state building. Used to be a couple other things, but now that's to the, that's, we're one house off of Monroe Avenue, and I believe the curb appeal might be helpful to the neighborhood itself.
This is member Schmidt. Um, again, thank you for talking to us, and especially without having the help of your architect. Um, one of the concerns that I did have, though, was the size of the front porch, not the length of the front of the house, but going out ten feet. In, you know, my, I, I am not an experienced uh, architect myself by training, but I do see the applications, and they'll say that five feet is the minimum that you need for comfortable seating, but you're, you're asking for double that. Um, did you look or explore things less than ten feet?
We, we, quite frankly, uh, Ms. Schmidt, I apologize. What I've, I've been on porches, I love front porch. There are people who have front porches. I like to sit out on front porches. And the depth of the front porch, my wife and I, I'm six feet, she's five eleven, uh, you put us in a chair of any size on a front porch, we're occupying probably four feet in depth. So if anybody wants to walk around us, they have a difficult time doing that. Uh, the other objective, as we'd indicated earlier, was that we would like to put a table out there so that we could eat at it. Uh, and our whole family, depending upon how many people we have here, that can range from anywhere from six to sixteen. Uh, and if we were to have a table out there that we could eat on, if you were to take your average table, your average table width is probably about thirty-six inches. And then if you want to actually sit at that table and actually enjoy your meal, you're gonna need spaces behind you, and actually have the ability to take a chair and move it out and then move it back in, and if the, God forbid, someone has to get up and move around you, uh, I need, I would like to have the space behind each chair so that someone could walk behind you. Uh, I understand what you're talking about as far as a minimal depth of, of, to enjoy is five feet, but that's minimal depth to, to walk and maybe stand, but that's, that's the reason why we were looking for a deeper porch, so that when we're on the porch, when someone has to move, the whole porch doesn't have to move. And as others, and the other, other, from looking around the other porches on, in the neighborhood, they do have to have, they do seem to have a similar depth. We may be a little bit deeper than that, uh, but they do seem to have a similar depth. I know Mrs. Wright, Susan, my, again, facing Northumberland, my immediate left neighbor, her porch is approximately ten feet. I have not measured it like I would, like I measured ours.
Uh, just for the record, I'll state that, um, we have received letters of support from the neighbors at thirty-three Northumberland Road. Um, Miss Wright, and from neighbors at fifty-two Northumberland, Ron and Joanne Trivago.
I, I apologize, Kirkpatrick, because her maiden name. I knew when she was a probation officer. Any other questions?
Rick, Dennis seems to have dropped off the Zoom call.
Okay, um, Ms. Wright, would you like to take over until we can get Dennis back?
Or, um, anyone, uh, anyone in the uh, Zoom meeting would like to also give any testimony or present any comments on this application? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Uh, we'll go on to twelve A O seven twenty-one. Application of Tyler Walk, owner of property located at thirty-one sixty-one East Avenue for an area variance from section two oh five dash two, twelve building addition to extend seventeen feet into the existing thirty-four point five foot rear setback or sixty foot rear setback is required by code. Also, I have an application and plans on file.
Who do we have presenting today, this application?
Yeah, David Hanlon, uh, I'm making a presentation, architect on the project, uh, behalf of Tyler Walk.
David, do you mind giving your address for the record?
Yeah, thirteen hundred University Ave, Rochester.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so good evening. Thanks for listening or hearing our presentation. Um, so the Wolves would like to um, construct a small addition to the rear of the house. Uh, on the site plan, you can see those two shaded areas. The shaded area in front is actually not a built structure. It's a, well, it's a patio. So they're just looking for a patio area on the front, because the house is elevated above uh, the ground plane. The, what we're talking about for tonight is the area on the rear of the property. But that's in addition uh, for their master bedroom area. On this first floor, there's a uh, living, dining, kitchen space, and the master bedroom, as well as a, an enclosed garage. Um, and it just so happens, the master bedroom is on the rear of the property, you know, facing um, the east. And so it's, it's kind of landlocked in that area, um, that the addition, you know, their desire to increase space within the master bedroom area has to go in that area where the setback is uh, currently, I think thirty-four feet, and this is about, about a fifteen-foot extension of that footprint in that area. So as you can see, it's a uniquely configured lot. We have Allen's Creek to the south. And then to the north is uh, still a tight setback, and on the east side, we have an even tighter setback. But since the master bedroom faces that side, uh, that, that gives us our condition. But since the master bedroom faces that side, uh that, that gives us our condition. The uh, the Wolves own actually all the properties surrounding this area, so even though, you know, we have a setback to this lot line, um there's no impact to other neighbors, given that the Wolves own those properties as well. Uh and as you can see, it's, it's quite a unique configuration of a lot because not only is it uh you know, the angle, as you can see of that lot line, uh angles over to the house. Um and then as the creek bends around, that's a part of the adjoining parcel that is also not, you know, it feels more like it's part of the Wolves backyard when you're there. Um the house to the east or to the right on this page uh is a little bit off the page. So it's, there's good distances between this house and other houses surrounding it such that this is really no impact on any character issues for the neighborhood. Um and this is a, a minimal type of application, there, um it's not a lot of square footage, it just so happens to be an increase on what's already a non-conforming situation along that edge. Um let me just see for my notes, I think, you know, it's a pretty simple, straightforward application, it's just that you know, because of the position of the house, because of Allen's Creek, we don't want to add towards Allen's Creek. Um and we can't, we don't want to add to the north either, because that's, that would be a varying situation as well. And the front door is on the left of the building, as you can see, so it's, it's not like we could shift things around and add somewhere else, um. Uh this really presents the best case, given that they own all the adjoining parcels uh and that we have uh you know, such a unique consider, configuration in this part of the lot. So that's, it's the, that's presentation, I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thanks David.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is member Schmidt, I just have a few questions. Um I was a little bit at a disadvantage because you really can't get back and see this. Um so I went on Google Earth and Google Maps for whatever that's worth, and it did look like thirty-two eleven's backyard to faces directly at the property, is with that, is that incorrect, that I was looking at that incorrectly?
So I'm not sure, thirty-two eleven, is that the house directly to the east of us here, Rick? Would you know that?
Uh, give me one second.
Looks like kind of a mid-century modern.
Yeah, no, that is, so you're right, that is the house to the east of us, and the Wolves own that house as well. Uh and they actually have no plans in selling that house so that it would be sold to somebody that this, this would impact down the road. Um they, they plan on keeping that house as well. Um no plans for it right now, but you know, they have a large family, they could have guests and all that. Um so it, it does face their side, but again, it's uh owned by the same person on both sides.
Okay, because I, I knew that you said that they owned the property, but since that was a half, separate house, I couldn't figure out how they, that, so that they own that too.
Yeah, they do.
And did they explore alternatives to it for a smaller addition, I couldn't, I didn't undersee an explanation, because I know they said it was small, but it looked like it was somewhat substantial, I just wasn't sure why they couldn't go out um on the map where it says fifteen point five and the two point O, did they explore going out towards the patio and making it less into the um, the setback?
When you say more into the patio, I'm not sure at all.
No, that where it says two point O going towards the patio. This goes behind the house, had, have you thought of going?
Well, you know, it's, it's a nice view out that way towards the creek, and if you push out that way, then you kind of enclose the window from the master bedroom. And it, it just tightens down to that lot line even more. Uh this was, you know, you know how it is when you lay out a space, you want it to be a usable, functional proportion space and this, this fit in that inside corner kind of nicely. As you can see, there's how the garage kind of bumps out on that northeast corner, it kind of tucks into that area. And so if we, if we moved out and skinnyed that up, it just creates some awkward spaces inside.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
Any other board members have any questions for this applicant? Is there anyone in the Zoom call who would like to speak on this application, application twelve A oh seven twenty-one? Jeff, can you just confirm, I'm not seeing any hands up.
Uh I don't see anybody, and Dennis is back on the meeting now.
A little computer difficulty, my apologies.
No problem, we're just closing the public record on, or.
I had it hooked on the phone, so I've been listening, but I just. Okay.
Go ahead then.
Oh wonderful, okay, very good, so we just finished up twelve A oh seven. Correct?
Correct.
Right, you just have to close the public hearing.
Okay, go right ahead and finish, would you, go ahead.
And uh as there's no one, uh no other questions on this applicant, a public hearing is not closed.
Okay, thank you very much, does anyone need a minute or two here? Since I've had a few moments, but does anyone? Everyone fine?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so let's go to uh eleven A oh two twenty-one, which is for Cardiff Park. So we had some extensive discussions about this. So I think just one thing, I would just make sure that all the, I think this is a good example of it though, that's and I'm not sure who went and who didn't go is, is, you know, it's our responsibility to try to review these applications, but again, to see these things in person is extremely important, especially a situation that just like this, but many others where you know, by looking at the submission and being there are sometimes two different things. Uh let's go around thoughts on this, uh Andrea, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I wrote this up as a denial, um as we've looked at these, you know, each of these, in order to uh approve this, you have to state basically five things and any, any one of those, if you can't state it, so I based a denial on the fact that I thought that there was a benefit that the ta, the applicant could achieve through other methods, focusing on the fact that um I do think there are other places you could put this same shed on the property that would be less intrusive to other properties and require less of the variance, but I think even more importantly, the benefit, they're seeking a storage and that doesn't require a lean-to type of shed that's required to be attached to the building and with this size lot, that there, there are alternative methods to, to construct some type of a storage facility. Um I, I, I feel confident that that's an appropriate denial for something like this, given the size of the lot. Um I did play with the idea of if we felt the applicant uh offered to submit photos of neighboring properties, um I, I'll be honest, with the getting dark at four forty-five, it was difficult for me to get over there to be actu, actually see what other properties had and, and what, how, how much this one really blended into the, the current building. Um we could table it for evidence, that would speak to um the extent of which this changes the character of the neighborhood, I think. But I, I don't think we necessarily need to say that it does or doesn't, uh I'm confident in a holding that um it's just not necessary, it's, it's not the least restrictive, you know, variance that, or, or the least substantial variance that could happen on this property.
Okay, and, and as I could just jump in real quick, this is Ken. Um I, the point that Andrea just made uh is um exactly the same that I wanted to make for the board in whole is that the applicant did ask for an opportunity to submit photos, it would only really go to the neighborhood characteristic criteria, and if that is not going to be determinative of what the board's going to decide to do here, then there's really no purpose that would be served in allowing that additional evidence to come in, because it wouldn't ultimately change the decision. So, you know, member Wright uh expressed her thoughts on, on why she thinks there's other reasons to deny the application.
Correct.
Other members uh obviously need a chance to express.
Yes.
As well, but, but I want them to keep that in mind.
Okay, well, we can circle back at the end of listening to everyone's thoughts here too, okay, so how about Judy?
Yes, I was out there and I was sort of being appalled, it really looks pretty bad, it, it, it doesn't have to be as tall. It's right in the front, I, I, I don't see why it couldn't have been pushed back, but it's really right out there in front. And it even makes this smaller front look even smaller, like it's squeezed in. I did go down the street and yes, there, I saw a few other sheds, but they're way in the back, they're not, you know, up in, in front. They are visible, but they're, you know, within the property line um on the side, but they're not right up at the front of the house, so. Um and there are plenty of alternatives, I, I feel, so I would deny it as well.
Kathleen?
Yeah, I, I'm, I, it's unfortunate, I am also a no, I agree with both Andrea and Judy, I think that there are alternative placements and the storage could be reasonably achieved through a different type of shed. Um and honestly, I found that the testimony today was that it was a detriment to at least one neighbor at being so close and in their direct line of vision, so I'm a no.
All right, Heather?
Um I would largely second uh what has been said by the other members, um I went over there as well. Um I also found it rather unsightly, um I, I also asked with respect to that, you know, are you talking about improving this? Because it's, it's um not pleasant to look at, um as evidenced by the, by the neighbors who weighed in. Um and I think uh just to clarify with uh respect to what member Wright said, um are we also talking about like some kind of like with so much land that they could build a, a shed is, is what you're envisioning? Uh because that's what I had in mind.
Yeah, or, or even that, you know, if their thought is that that they want to keep the vegetable garden and keep all this landscaping and things like that, that they could have additional landscaping on the additional acre that they have and put the shed, even if they want it to keep a lean-to type structure, there were other locations and they could move other things rather than being limited to, you know, just this very small lot that they're trying to stay on within.
Okay, all right, how about Ed?
Yeah, I would uh support closing the public hearing, voting to deny, based upon what everyone else has said.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I agree, from going out there, I mean, that, I think the issue for me was how abrupt it is, it's just really kind of in your face and it really doesn't, I mean, it does nothing to enhance the property, that's for sure, and I could, you know, sympathize with the neighbors a little bit. Okay, so sounds like uh Andrea that the votes are there to deny this application and then we would then not accept any other materials and close the public hearing, is everyone generally in concurrence with that?
Yes. Yes, I, I just think uh Andrea will have to state the closing of the public hearing in her decision, because we did not close it at the end of the
Yes.
Testimony.
That'd be fine.
And I also think, I also think that the character of the neighborhood should be one of the other reasons. Um in addition uh to the possibility to achieve a benefit through other means as well.
Okay, so let's hear Andrea's, and then we can comment from there, go ahead, please.
Um, can, give me one second, because I wasn't planning on adding anything about the character of the neighborhood, so let me just um.
I think Andrea, you probably are best served by just having, uh reading what you've prepared.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I move to deny application eleven A dash oh two dash twenty-one of Catherine Solano, owner of property at Four Cardiff Park for area variances, et cetera, all as described in the le, application and plans on file, based on the following findings of fact.
Andrea, just can you start again, but say I move to close the public hearing and?
Oh, apologies, okay. Uh I move to close the public hearing and deny application eleven A dash oh two dash twenty-one of Catherine Solano, et cetera, all as described in the application and plans on file, based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the granting of the requested variances will be detrimental to nearby properties due to the location and appearance which was testified to by the public. Number two, the board finds that the benefits sought by the applicant can be reasonably achieved by other methods. Based on the evidence presented, there appears to be other locations on the property that would permit construction of a storage shed. Applicant testified that a lean-to structure could not reasonably be placed in other locations, but the board finds that A, a future planned extension of a brick patio and the existence of landscaping by itself does not preclude a storage shed and B, that there are other styles of stored sheds other than a lean-to style structure that could be utilized in other areas of their property. Period.
Okay. All right.
I second the motion.
Okay, Ed does, all right, did.
Motion, the motion is to deny, Ms. Schmidt?
Sorry, yes, I was muted.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Mike's?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson's right?
Yes.
Motion to deny carries.
Okay, so the next application is seventy-one Gulfside, that's the generator. Um, does anyone have any concerns about this one?
No. You went on standing in Nancy's driveway, which was set way is back, I mean, the entrance to the side is way back the driveway. You can clearly see the generator right across the street, I mean, it's right there, I mean, this won't be seen at all, so um.
Okay Judy, then go ahead and proceed.
Sure, I move that we approve application twelve A oh one twenty-one, based on the following findings of fact. One, the generator placement on the side of the house instead of in the rear yard is about equidistant from the nearest residence. Two, there is a generator directly across the street that is visible from the street and, and a variance may have been granted for it. Three.
Judy, can we just, Judy, can you just kind of change that up and say something more or less that there are other generators in the area that, you know, instead of specifically pointing one out that may or may not have gotten the variance?
Okay, all right, there are several generators in the area, can I, should I say visible or just?
Yeah, fine, yeah, visible from the street is fine.
Okay, there are several generators in the area that are visible from the street, thanks. Okay, three, the side yard placement of the generator will be completely shielded from view by well-established landscaping and there will be no visible change to the char, to the I can't read my writing, to the character of the neighborhood. Four, placing the generator in the rear yard would necessitate the removal of a mature azalea flowering bush that will have a negative impact on both the applicant and the neighboring property on the west. Five, the windows in the rear yard would not permit the placement of a generator because there would not be a five-foot clearance. And if it were placed further, more centered in the backyard, it would be in the middle of the Koi Pond. Conditions, this variance only applies to the position of the generator as presented in the written application and testimony presented. Two, the weekly testing of the generator shall occur between the hours of ten AM and four PM. Three, unnecessary building and planning permits must be obtained.
That's all necessary building permit shall be obtained.
Okay.
About a second, please.
Second.
Okay Andrea.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Um if I may, my only hesitation is with respect to specifically creating a condition as to the time for testing, I just, where is that, is that coming from, I just want to clarify about that, because we hadn't really discussed that.
Well, I asked them if they would be amenable to something during, you know, either the late, late to mid morning or um into the afternoon, and he said yes, so usually we asked that it be done during day, you know, daytime hours, and this would give them a, a wide range of time to choose from, that's why I put it in, but if you don't want it, I mean, that's up to Rick too, whether we want to put any timing in there.
Um, you know, in the past, I think we've seen both, I think generally, people do not test these things in the evening hours, but many times we don't restrict it either, so.
I mean, I don't think Nancy would at all, but you know, we don't know the next owner.
Do you object Heather to having it in there, or are you concerned about it, or?
I mean, I agree that as a practical matter, that's probably when they're gonna do it. I just don't know if we really want to make it like a condition that they have to strictly abide to and and if they want to do it at nine AM, I don't think it's gonna, there's.
Oh, okay.
So I, to me, it just seems like an unnecessary condition, but it.
Yeah, I, the only thing I know is having had one of these, you typically set it for the particular time and it just doesn't, you know, automatically.
Right.
Um, the only thing you ever run into is at least mine doesn't realize when daylight savings time is.
Yeah, you got a clock, automatic clock switch.
Yeah.
Well, that's because you do it at six AM, right?
Okay, well, well, why don't, why don't we, Judy, if you don't object, I don't, I don't know that it's necessary. We certainly have not done this in every generator application for sure. So, you know, if if you're wel- willing to remove it, then I would just remove.
I'm fine. I mean.
Okay, very good.
Do you feel comfortable with that too?
Yes, I feel comfortable with that. And who, who seconded that motion, please?
Andrea.
I did.
So you would need to consent to that amendment as well.
Yes, I consent. Uh, I'll just note that it's not abnormal for us to put testing requirements. It's just usually when it's closer to another home.
Close to another home. There's, there's no question. It's close.
Okay, all right, we're get, we're getting a little off track here now.
And then we need to, we need to start the roll call again, please.
Yes, yeah.
Go ahead.
So the motion is amended to remove the
Correct.
Uh, condition of testing. Do I have a second on that motion?
Can I second that as well?
Yeah, it's already seconded by member Wright and she consented to the amendment.
Right, yeah, it's just a matter of agreeing to the amendment, right.
Okay, so the motion is to approve with two conditions. Ms. Heather Mc- uh, Ms. McKay Drury.
I approve it.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Ms. Mikes.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson's right.
Yes.
And Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Motion to approve carries as amended.
Okay, very good. All right, so then we're moving to sixty-five Brookline. That is the covered porch, the smaller of the two that we're looking at tonight. Uh, any concerns about this?
No.
Yeah, I think it generally looks good. And they've got to still go, it will have to have a condition about the ARB, obviously, because they haven't gone yet, so.
Right, right, right.
Okay, all right, Kathleen.
All right. I move to approve application twelve A dash O two dash two-one based on the following findings of fact. One, the variance request is to allow a front porch to extend five feet into the front setback where a forty-feet setback is required by code. Two, currently, the applicant's home has no covered entranceway. With the addition of a porch, the homeowners will have a safe and spacious entranceway for their family to avoid the elements and also have a place to sit. Three, the granting of the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties and is consistent with the look and style of nearby homes. Four, the requested variance is not substantial in light of the fact that the porch is open in nature and only have a roof over it and thus will not materially infiltrate the front yard setback. Five, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other method or without variance is the minimum size for a porch to allow seating is five feet. Six, there's no evidence that there would be a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Condition number one, the variance granted herein applies only to the front porch addition described in and and in the location depicted on the application. Two, the proposed porch shall be open in nature in order to minimize the visual effect. Three, all necessary building permits and architectural review board approval shall be obtained.
Second, Judy.
Great.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion is, motion is to approve with conditions. Uh, Ms. Thompson's right.
Yes.
Mr. Mikes.
Yes.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, the next application is Fernborough Road. That is the sunroom addition.
Yeah, thi- this is mine and um I've written this up as an approval. Um, it's consistent with other uses in the area. You know, the lot is pre-existing legal non-conforming lot in terms of sizes, no place else to put it. They have a hedge row of evergreens in the back that will shield the view of this from the neighbors in the back. I don't see any issues with it.
Right.
All right, is there anyone else have any concerns about this application?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
I move we approve application twelve A O five two-one to allow a rear yard setback of thirty-five feet for an enclosed three-season porch and deck based on the following findings of fact. One, the requested setback in area variance for a single-family home is a type-two action pursuant to sick NY-CRR section sign six-one-seven-point-five open print C, closed print, open print sixteen, closed print, and open print seventeen, closed print. And no review is required pursuant to the state environmental quality review. Two, the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to address the benefits sought by the applicant. The pre-existing residence is on a pre-existing legal non-conforming lot with respect to lot area, lot width, and side setbacks. There is no other location for the three-season porch that would not require an even greater variance or would be impractical. The ver- requested variance allows for a three-season porch, which is a use consistent with other porches in the neighborhood. Three, no other, no other alternative can alleviate the difficulty of pursuit desired result. As noted before, the lot is a pre-existing legal non-conforming lot. The five-foot variance is minor in the circumstances and consistent with other three-season porches in the area.
Ed, Ed, can I just, can I just stop you real quick here? Um, you're talking about the porch addition. Can you also include the deck addition too? Because the deck is part of the variance also.
Yeah, I didn't mention that at the beginning, but I think I keep on.
You left it out, number two. You just said.
Number two, so there is no other location for the three-season porch and deck that would not require an even greater variance or would not be practical. The requested variance allows a three-season porch and deck, which is a use consistent with other porches in the neighborhood. Three, no other alternative can alleviate the difficulty and produce the desired result. As noted before, the lot is a pre-existing legal non-conforming lot. The five-foot variance is minor in the circumstances and consistent with other three-season porches and decks in the area. Four, there'll be no unacceptable change in the character of the neighborhood and no substantial detriment to nearby properties is expected from approval of the variance. The proposed three-season porch and deck in uh are consistent with similar uses in the area. The property has substantial plannings in an evergreen hedge row on the rear of the lot that will screen the three-season porch and deck from view. Five, I mean, this is interesting. They said the hardship was self-created. I'm going to say the hardship was not self-created and is based upon the existing lot. Six, the health, safety, and welfare of the community will not be adversely affected by approval of the variance. Um, the following conditions apply. The variance is based on the application submitted, including various drawings and plans, and only authorizes project described therein to subject to obtaining necessary building permits and inspections.
Second.
One sec. Who, I'm sorry, who was that?
Judy.
Judy. Motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Thompson's right.
Yes.
Mr. Mikes.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
All right, now we're going to twenty-five Northumberland Road, which is the longer of the covered porches in tonight's meeting. So are there thoughts on this? Anyone have concerns about twenty-five Northumberland?
I have to be honest, I'm bothered by the ten feet. I, you know, the, I don't, I, I think that is completely self-created. I do think that I don't want to second-guess the decision. I just think that there are alternatives and the neighbors appear to have front porches that are one, two, and three feet smaller. Um, and I, I just don't think they met the burden with regard to that piece of it.
I have a question. Did you, did you feel the same then about the neighbor to their right as you're facing the house? Because when I was there, Karen did say that it was going to be the so- pretty, the size pretty much of what the neighbor has, which is to me a pretty good massive-looking porch. Did you, are you okay with that one or did you think that was a little large as well?
Sorry, I was talking with the mute off. I, 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 I don't, I wasn't asked to approve the, the variance and I don't know what they needed with regard to it. I just, it bothers me that a forty-foot setback is required and now we're down to a twenty-four to twenty-six foot setback. Um, when I think they could get the same results with the smaller depth.
So you, so how small would you go then?
Well, I, 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 I don't want to create the number. I'm just saying, I don't think it needs to be ten feet. I think that is a incredibly massive front porch. Um, and I'm not saying that it's not going to look beautiful. I'm just saying that there are, the zoning board is required to look at standards and I don't think I think that there are alternatives that could be smaller and still achieve the same result. That's just me.
On, and I will say that if we had, I think we're about seven feet maybe deep, okay? But if I had my brothers, I would have made it a little bit wider, only though we didn't want to go through the variance, so we stay within the lot of the setback, but um.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, this does, oh, sorry, Judy.
I'm not bothered by the size. Go ahead, Ed, I'm sorry.
Now, I mean, it, it does become this issue of um, the benefit they're seeking. I mean, I think from the discussion, they want to um have a, a bigger porch. Yeah, I believe the applicant talked about maybe being able to have a table out there. I know particularly in the city, you see some big porches where people can put tables and couches and and stuff like that out there. Um, well, not couches, you know, but.
A glider.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and, and so then to my way, when I try to balance that, I say, okay, it would be great for the applicant to have what they want, but is there any real detriment to the neighborhood? I guess um, that's kind of the question. And I don't know if I think that having a ten feet is really going to be detrimental to, to the neighborhood. So I guess I would balance it that I would agree with the applicants.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I mean, I just think it's a difference in of opinion. I don't think it's a balancing act. I think that there are provisions that we need to follow that says, do they meet these? And I don't think that they met that particular standard of there are alternatives that could make it that would be less intrusive.
All right, one o- one other thing to point out too is that, you know, it was interesting when we compared just a little bit intuitively the other application tonight that we heard when the question was asked about how wide would the porch be? Because the ten feet is an issue, but also, you know, this thing is thirty-five feet long too. And it's going to appear to be very large on the front of this house because it really encompasses the whole front of the house, basically.
Yeah.
So I, I think the appearance of it i- is the, the, a couple of feet, whether it's seven feet, eight feet, nine feet, or ten feet is part of it, but also the scale of it against the house. So I would point that out for the members' consideration too. So how about, um, Heather, what do you think about it?
Um, I also noted when I reviewed this that it, it's deeper. It's, that's quite a deep porch. A ten-foot deep porch is very deep. And the um surveys that were provided for the neighboring homes, I understand that um there, there was testimony about other porches, but it sounds like we don't actually have the depth of that neighbors that's directly next to them that it sounds like they would be happy with matching um the depth of hers. Uh, and the only things that we do have that are certain are um, the other survey maps. And those other survey maps, if you go through them, they're all seven to eight feet in de- deep. Um, so, you know, I, I, I ultimately do agree that it's kind of balancing with the purpose um that uh they want to use it for. Um, I wonder if at something that would be much more standard for depth for a porch at eight feet, um, would they still be able to have a table and chairs and um happily enjoy their porch? Um, I do have some hesitation about that, but I, I also feel that they have compelling reasons for, for what they want to do out there, so.
So, can I just ask something? Because I, I noticed the same thing that Heather's noticing about everything they submitted shows a seven to eight-foot depth. So it's much less about the setback of twenty-four and twenty-six feet, which seems like you could say that that's somewhat consistent in the neighborhood or, or at least not changing the character of the neighborhood. Um, and I know, I, I'm, I'm sure, I, I think I probably suggest tabling more than anyone on this board. Um, but I wouldn't be opposed to tabling it. We, we've done it before, we, where we've asked applicant to consider uh and present additional evidence as to how that this is the, the least, yeah, or
Minimum, yeah.
The least um, variance necessary to accomplish their goals. And it might be that they submit a furniture plan that shows that they do need ten feet, and then I think that makes it much easier to do the approval. Or they might come back and say, you know what, we can do this at eight and a half feet or something and, and we you know, with an amended application can easily feel all comfortable about approving it, but that's where my head would go, since it seems like we're all a little conflicted on it. To just table that and give them an opportunity.
Go ahead, hold on one second.
This is, this is just Ken. Um, I, I just wanted to, um, I, I was going to say very much again the same thing that Andrea said. Um, but um I wanted to also point out and remind the board that um, it was quite obvious that the applicant was disappointed that their architect did not appear to testify. Um, and that might give the architect an opportunity to appear and testify and speak to some of these issues as to, Dennis, you mentioned scale, you know, is this designed this large because of the scale of the house and how it fits? We've heard testimony from architects about that before. Um, and in terms of it being the least uh intrusive, um, I think the architect could speak to that in terms of what the actual uses are going to be as well. So I think it would be really helpful, actually, if the board would consider tabling it to give the architect a chance to come in and provide testimony to supplement what the Gallagher's already testified to themselves.
Yeah, and I, and we need also to keep the public hearing open.
It wa- it was already cl- it was already closed. That's why.
We can, we can.
We could reopen.
True, we'll just do it in the, in the decision, but also in regards to the massing aspect of it, we did, they did not submit an elevation drawing.
Correct.
Um, obtaining an elevation drawing might help you visualize exactly what's being requested here.
I, I noticed that as well, Rick, that it, you know, without a street elevation to see how this thing would look from, if you're standing in front of it, it, it's hard to picture.
True.
Especially when it wraps the whole house like that. Obviously, being a more of a construction person, I can kind of visualize it better, but I think for all the board members to see that would be important. So Judy, this is your application. So what are you thinking here about what?
I certainly will go along with the board. I think you've raised some valid points. So um if, if the majority feel that way, then, then I certainly would not.
All right, well, then let's, let's proceed in that direction because I think it's, it's fair to the applicants and also fair to the board. All right, well, then let's, let's proceed in that direction because I think it's, it's fair to the applicants and also fair to the board members to, you know, get some more clarification here and some more justification of why this is necessary at the dimensions that we see.
Yeah, before we start with the decision, uh, the tabling decision, can we just get a consensus on what we're asking the applicant to provide us? Um, one, I have an elevation drawing. And I don't know, Andrea, if you want to word the necessity of the ten feet, how do you want to word that request from them?
Like, um, requesting that the applicant submit uh, either additional information as to the necessity of a ten-foot deep porch being, you know, in order to meet their needs. Or uh, considering alternative porch depths, that would be the, what's the language, least?
Minimize, minimize.
Yeah, that would minimize the variance required.
Yes. Yeah, because usually what we're trying to look for is this the minimum that is necessary to meet the needs of the applicant. So they certainly could try to convince us that ten feet is the minimum, and if they can do that by, whether it's a furniture drawing or, or more testimony, then so be it.
So, um, just to.
On needing this, the, the size, okay, because of his six feet and his wife's five-eleven and and a five-foot table and chairs and so on, but um, you know, there still might be some other way.
Yes.
Convincing, so.
If, if I could, I, I do this for some of the other boards, not typically for ZBA, but if I could suggest a resolution and see if that might be acceptable.
In deference of time, that's fine, yes.
So, um, what I would suggest is a resolution that reads that um, the zoning board of appeals moves to reopen the public hearing on this application. And then to table the application and request that the applicant provide additional documentary and testimony, documentary evidence and testimony on the following issues. That the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method other than the variance requested. That the requested variance is not substantial and that the variance is the minimum necessary to grant the relief sought by the applicant.
I hope you got all that down, remember.
And did you also want, did you also want to add in about, and I don't know the language, the, the view from the front, the elevation?
You did say that, I think, Ken. That was the first thing you said, I thought.
I said the documentary evidence and testimony, so I leave it to them. I mean, I, but, but you could specifically make that request as well.
Yeah, I think it's good because.
And to provide, and to provide a front elevation depicting the proposed.
Porch. That's good. Yeah, I think it's fair when we ask people to table something that we're specific about something.
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
Rick, can this be?
Can we?
This will be going to ARB, right?
Yeah, it has to go to ARB. I don't know if they were waiting to get their variance before they went to ARB or what, but it's going to eventually have to go to ARB.
Yes.
Well, even if they're on, they could withdraw, I mean, for the, for their meeting because it's down the road, it's the end.
Well, well, they could, they could go to architecture review board with what they have and come back to us and say, no, this is what we want you guys to take a look at. Here's our elevation drawing that was approved by the architecture review board. I mean, elevation probably won't change regardless of its depth. It'll look the same. It's just going to be a few feet less wide.
Okay. All right, so Judy, you're good with what Ken's proposed motion is?
Yeah, same time with that.
All right, how about a second?
Yeah. For one second, Ken, Ken, can you get me over that wording for the decision?
I sure will, Rick. Thank you very much.
Yep, all right. Okay, so who seconded, who seconded?
I did.
Andrea's seconded.
All right, great, go ahead. I'm sorry, it's hard to hear. We got a lot of chatter. Go ahead.
Uh, the motion is to reopen the public hearing and table it for information, additional information. Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. McKay, Drury?
Yeah.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson, good right?
Yes.
The motion to table and open the public hearing carries.
Okay, so we have one application left. Let's just remind you that Mr. Gordon wants to address the board members when we finish this, so don't disappear for a cold one until we finish with Mr. Gordon. Okay, so the last application is thirty-one sixty-one East Avenue. And that's, um, the rear setback issue and the building addition into the seventeen feet. So uh, thoughts on that? Does anyone have concerns about twelve oh seven?
Well, I feel like I'm the, the complainer with lots of questions tonight, but I, my concern.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Um, so here's my concern, and this is probably a question for Rick. Normally I would have said, when I looked at, again, the thirty-two eleven East Avenue home and the way that it looked directly onto the property, that it was too close with just seventeen and seventeen point five feet between their lot line. And, but they own it. These homeowners own it. So in light of that, is that all right? It's not considered substantial because the next person who would buy it would be seeing that's what their view is going to be.
I, I, you can still use substantial because it is a substantial variance regardless of who owns it. But you can say that there's no impact on the neighbor because the neighbor is the owner.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I have to admit, I, I, I guess I, I share Kathleen's concern about that, or I mean, the fact that they own the next lot is kind of a side thing because um, it will be impacting the next lot. The next lot could be sold. There'll be someone else owning it. It will change the, the, the setbacks arguably in the area. I mean, I guess you could say, well, they own the next lot. If they can't sell it for as much, that's their problem, but.
Well, not only that, Ed, but the person buying the lot is going to know that that structure is there.
Oh, I understand that, but, but it's still also then, I mean, my concern becomes then the next person wants to do something similar and they're very close to their neighbor who they, it's not them, it's someone else. And then this is set a precedent.
Yeah, well.
This is member McKay. I, I understand that, and I, I think that, you know, just because you own two lots doesn't mean that, you know, you should be doing something that makes one of them unsellable. For example, I'm not sure that I necessarily think that the uh, variance request here, seventeen feet, seventeen and a half, I'm not sure that it reaches that point, but I agree out of, on the principle that, you know, you don't, you don't want, just because I don't think that it really makes a big difference one way or the other, that they, that they own the, the neighboring lot. You shouldn't be making, you know, any of the lots unsellable.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so, 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 yeah, and, and I, and I think those points are all valid. I think the other thing we really need to look at is, you know, what, what is the condition there? You know, if that really was another lot, what, how would you feel about that, that dimension? Would you feel that's reasonable? We looked at once tonight of way less than that in other areas, and the scale of this house certainly has something to do with it as well as what would happen on the lot next to it. So it becomes, I think, difficult, at least in the years I've been on the board, to try to suggest what something else might be. I mean, the precedent argument, I think, is there in most everything that we do, so. You know, it's, it, it becomes difficult, but I think you got to ask yourself, well, is this reasonable as far as that type of setback, given the size of the home and, you know, other alternatives that we heard about? And, you know, is it reasonable or not?
I also think it's important to consider the placement of the neighboring property. Um, will this structure, will this addition have an impact on their, their dining room window or something like that? And obviously, no, because the house is quite further to the east on, on that lot.
Yeah, can we find that house? I, I think he said that it was on part of it, but it's, I just wanted to see where the house is on this.
Jeff, do you have, Jeff, do you have the, um, GIS up by any chance?
I don't, I don't, but I can get it up.
I'd like to get it up.
You can see it on Google Maps really clearly, and it is diagonal that it will look directly at that if there wasn't all that mature landscaping.
I think what you can't see is where the lot lines are on Google Maps, so.
Yeah, we're going to bring up our GIS. You'll see lot lines.
Okay.
Just staying out for a second, I'll bring it up.
That, that was the hard part for me is that, that this area of East Avenue, you know, the lot lines were drawn in such a way that it's hard to tell where everything is placed within a lot.
I have to pull it up on, uh, connect eagle dude.
Looks like a gerrysman during that.
Lucky you're an IT guy, Jeff, because the rest of us probably be lost there, so.
Why do they pay me the big bucks?
Someday we'll be able to just send a drone out. There we go.
Oh, it is.
Is that helpful, Heather? Or Andrea, I guess?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think you can make the argument that.
It's closer than I expected.
Oh, it's rea- it's really close. Had they not owned it, I was voting no.
Well, I, I think you can make an argument, and I, I'm just throwing this out, but that the existing house is, is, is closer than what the addition will be. That, that garage area is closer to the neighboring house than what the addition would be.
Oh, my.
Just because of the angle of the neighboring property house and also the way the, the addition.
And it's quite, it's quite add the way those two were designed.
And I would say that that neighboring house looks like it certainly doesn't meet the side, may not meet side setback requirements either. Or at least it would be just as close to the setback as.
That front left corner is pretty close. Yep.
That's what I'm saying about this area. It's just, it's, you know, when you talk about changing the character of neighborhood, about a house being too close, it's really hard to tell where property lines are here.
Yeah.
That is a good point, Andrea.
Yep.
I, I suppose that that does probably kind of push me in the direction of, of accepting it, given that they also have that restricted variance on a different portion of the side lot there.
And the, the, yeah, the dimension is pinching it there, which we, we find that a lot houses that are built diagonally like that on the, on the lot, so. All right, so thoughts then? Are we, are we okay with this, or does anyone still have concerns about it?
I'm fine to approve it. I, I think, I, I would mention the odd shapes of the lot and the, you know, parts of it being la- largely undevelopable because of Allen's Creek. Um, you know, as part of the approval, I would, I'd approve it.
Well, Kathleen, what is your thoughts? Have you been moved in this discussion or?
Yeah, no, one, once they told me they owned thirty-two eleven, I was okay. You know, and the next person who buys that will know there's a that's what they're getting.
Yes, they will. Yes, they will. Okay, well, if you're comfortable, then it sounds like the rest of the board members are.
Kathleen, Kathleen, just before you start, one of your conditions is that they are going to require an environmental protection overlay district slash water course permit.
Can you go through that one again? I've never heard of that one.
EPO. Environmental protection overlay district in parentheses, water course.
Okay, oh, environmental protection overlay.
District.
District.
In parentheses, water course permit.
Rick, is that going to require some sort of seeker review?
It will when we do the EPOD permit. Because the.
Well, so that raises a question, though. Because we're not.
Can we give approval?
Yeah, can we do an approval, so?
Well, I, I think we are, it's a type one or type, uh, type two action because it's a residential setback. When we issue the, the EPOD permit, issuing them an EPOD permit will require seeker review.
Okay. I, I, thinking it through, I agree with you.
Yeah, you just have to focus on what the act. Yeah, you just have to focus on what the actual action being taken by the ZBA itself is, and all that is, is an area variance.
Right, and then.
We're not, we're not issuing, we're not issuing an EPOD permit.
Yeah, you're just posing that it's a condition of, of the variance that they must obtain. Right.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I agree with you guys.
Okay. All right, are you comfortable with that, Kathleen? We can help you with that or.
Yep, no, no, you would just have to, um, again, I was, I rew- rewritten this as we've talked, so.
Okay, we'll take your time.
Bear with me and, and if you have corrections, shout them out.
Okay.
All right, I move to approve application twelve A dash oh seven dash two one, based on the following findings of fact. One, the area variance request is to allow an addition to extend an additional seventeen point five feet into the pre-existing legal non-conforming setback. Two, due to the location of the master bedroom and bath and the unusual lot configuration as well as the property adjoining Allen's Creek, there is no alternative location for the addition but to extend further into the setback. The granting of the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties as the applicants own all adjoining lots and homes. Four, while the variance is substantial, the fact that the property is currently constructed already extends considerably into the backyard setback. And the homeowners intend to keep much of the mature landscaping that will shield the addition from neighboring homes. The, there, the variance is permitted. The benefit sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other method or without variance. Six, there's no evidence that there would be a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Conditions. The variance granted herein applies only to the master bath and bedroom addition described in and in the location depicted on the application and in the testimony provided and will not apply to future projects. Two, all necessary building permits including environmental protection overlay district per and water course, close permit permits as well as architectural review board approvals shall be obtained.
Kathleen, it, it will, will not require architecture review board.
Oh, it doesn't need that, okay. Well, let's take that out then.
Hey, do you have any other conditions?
I do not.
Okay, so a second, please.
Judy?
Okay.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson, right?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. McKay, Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries. Uh, before we get into, um, Ken's discussion, I just want to ask Heather, are you comfortable with, um, taking control of applications now after you've seen it, the, the board work it for a couple of months?
Yeah.
Okay, so you all started signing new applications.
Yippee.
Lucky you.
And if I have any questions, I'll just reach out to you, Rick, about.
Yeah, no problem at all.
Great.
Again, any member who has any questions while you're reviewing your applications, please feel free to call me.
Okay, very good. All right, Mr. Gordon, you're up.
Are we going to discuss the schedule for twenty-two first?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Ken. I, I, I gave you guys all the schedule for, meeting schedule for twenty twenty-two. Our only conflict is our October meeting. The October meeting is right during, I believe, Rosh Hashanah. Trying to find it himself.
I think you had the sixth down.
Yeah, I had Thursday the sixth as our meeting date in lieu of Wednesday the fifth. I'm just wondering if that one change is going to be an issue for any of the members. And I want to make sure that we do have quorum for a Thursday meeting in October. I know it's ways out.
Nine months from now?
But we have to set this, we have to set this and get it online and everything, so I want to make.
I, I already know that I will not be able to make the meeting in March, the time of the second.
Okay.
All right, but let's talk about this October date, Rick. So I, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but. Are you saying that October fifth, Wednesday, October fifth is the first night of Rosh?
I believe Tuesday is the first night, Wednesday is the second night. Yeah.
I thought you, it's Rosh Hashanah. Okay, yeah. And by the time we meet, it's sort of second, you know, second.
It is over by the time we would meet, but I, I.
No, no, I think, I think doing, doing Thursday night makes sense. Yeah.
Okay.
As long as it's after, right, Ken? Yeah.
We will set that for Thursday meeting in October of twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
I did have two other comments though, Rick, on the schedule, because I just took a look at it this evening. One is that the introductory paragraph still refers to emergency orders. That should be removed. In, in lieu of that, we should be using what we're using now in the public notice that refers to chapter four seventeen of the laws of twenty twenty-one. So if we can make that change. The second thing, there is sort of an asterisk red note that says Zoom meetings under. Just planning, zoning. So chapter four seventeen of the laws of twenty twenty-one, sunset's on January fifteenth twenty-two right now. So as the law stands right now, without any further extension, we go back live in February.
Right.
I expect it, I expect that it's going to be extended, but I don't know that.
I, I agree with you.
Well, that's why it's a tentative and it will go on the website as a tentative agenda. I mean, we, we have had to modify them. Through the year because of, this is a perfect example of going back to the Zoom meetings. We had to modify that kind of an agenda. Or meeting schedule, excuse me. So I think at this point, we'll, we can change that language, but I'm going to keep the Zoom meetings in place.
Yeah, that's fine. I, that was more, the second point was more for.
Yeah.
Word.
I figured that. Yeah, but thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just ask something? Am I wrong on this? Didn't, didn't, weren't the meetings previously at seven fifteen?
We're at seven fifteen when we're in person, because it gives people a little more time to get here.
Travel time.
Yeah, I think you guys don't have to really drive very far to get to your bedrooms or wherever. As a joke, come on.
I'm driving from work, so you know, it's still a drive.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Gordon, how about it?
Well, before we take that on, so we, I have two things. One, do you need to adopt that meeting schedule, Rick, or?
No, no, it's just really.
And so if we're going to adjourn now the ZBA meeting, that's fine. And then we're going to need to, this is going to be an attorney-client discussion, so I need everyone else. Who is not a board member, including the court reporter, to leave the meeting. Jeff, of course, you can stay on. Rick, of course, you can stay on. Heather, this involves a matter that you are not participating in, so I would say you do not need to be on it. And actually, in reviewing my notes with Mr. Mancuso, Mr. Primo. You are not actually a subject of this discussion either, so. You can stay because you're not, you're not precluded from staying, but it's, this discussion is not going to include you. So you're welcome to leave if you want. But I need.
Now you got me curious.
But I need, Jeff, I need, yeah, I need you to boot everybody else up.
Okay, let's do that.
All right, I'm working on it.
Do as you wish, Ed.
Have a great night, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Bye bye.
May I have thirty seconds to discipline some children? Just thirty seconds.
Can I come and help?
How about Uncle Dennis? I'll come too.
All right, we need, we need Steve going too.
I'm working on it. Do, and stop recording, obviously, right?
Please, yes, and stop recording.